And at this point, let's kick off. I see Marlon's here as well. Let's kick off the face mask ordinance discussion. And we will seek out both Marlon and Scott for some background and where they might want to head. But I think we've all been getting a lot of conversation with, you know, people around town. And, you know, it seems like they feel that a time has come, but that is up for discussion. So Scott, you want to like, you know, at least establish a base of what's kind of going on? And the DHHS recommendations as opposed to CDC and how we should probably proceed in this?
Sure. So currently in the town of Plymouth, we have seen our cases drop, COVID cases drop dramatically. And currently we have one to four cases, but I think more specifically, we probably have one active case as of today. And you could see over the weekend in the last of, last week, that there was a couple of days, we had zero cases. And a couple of days, we have one case. So our cases have dropped significantly. And as you stated, Bill, is I am hearing from the businesses, I am hearing from the residents, that they feel the time has come to remove the mask ordinance. And looking at the guidance, the latest guidance from DHHS on May 17, they actually put out a bulletin on people who are fully vaccinated and those aren't, and gave a small sketch to, if you're fully vaccinated, do you need to wear a mask indoors? No. If you're fully vaccinated, do you need to wear a mask outdoors? No. Vaccination status unknown or not, or are not fully vaccinated. Indoors, you should wear a mask. Outdoors, you do not need to wear a mask. So if we're talking about outdoors and we're talking about going into the businesses, that's the latest guidance that DHHS has put out with regards to the universal best practices that the governor put in place two weeks ago on a Saturday. So that kind of sets the stage for where we are. I think you probably all have seen when you've been into some of our largest stores, they're not enforcing the mask ordinance. They're not requiring masks be worn in the town of Plymouth in some of the largest stores. So, you know, I think we're in a safe place. If that's where the board wanted to move. I, you know, I guess one caveat to that is I would keep masks in place within the town office. Because we have communicated, we're following that existing guidance through June 15. That would give us a little bit more time to figure out how we handle it internally. And I know that Missy received some guidance from PrimeX, our workers' compensation liability area, with regards to just that. So I guess that kind of sets the stage for where we are, Bill, and how we move forward.
Okay. Thanks, Marlon. Missy, did you want to say anything to the board? I think we all had a chance to look at this, but maybe you can clarify some stuff.
Yeah. Did the board, did the board get a copy of the?
Kathy sent it out this morning.
Oh, of my emails?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And that had the guidance from the Bureau of Infectious Disease Control attached to it. So basically, what Scott was saying is that they're saying, they do have that table on there that shows that outdoors situations, yeah, outdoor situations, it's really kind of irrespective of whether you're vaccinated. But indoor situations in particular, they're saying that they're recommending that businesses and organizations implement the mitigation measures outlined in the New Hampshire Universal Best Practices, including face mask use and social and physical distancing for all persons irrespective of vaccination status as a pandemic control measure. And that was, that's right at the top of that Bureau of Infectious Disease Control guidance. So they're kind of taking a little bit more cautious stance than the CDC did when they put out their non-vaccinated guidance. Because they're saying, you know, if you don't know, you're in an indoor setting. And they didn't really specify in this part whether it was indoors or outdoors. But then in the table, they make that distinction. And then further on down in the, it talks about their, in the second page of that guidance from the Bureau of Infectious Disease Control, it talks about how, what their rationale was for being more cautious about it than the CDC. And basically what they're saying is that that we still have across the state, a substantial level of community transmission and a large proportion of the New Hampshire population is not yet fully vaccinated. Therefore, the next several of weeks are an important time of transition to drive COVID-19 numbers lower. And they're saying that population level mitigation measures would end the pandemic more quickly. And they're saying current CDC guidance is difficult for businesses and organizations to implement without developing a process to identify which people are fully vaccinated versus not fully vaccinated. All of these considerations factor into their updated and clarified New Hampshire guidance outlined above. So basically, they're suggesting that until things settle a little bit more, that in New Hampshire, they're recommending a more cautious stance. So, or I don't know what the board wants to do about a town-wide mask ordinance. That's kind of outside my bailiwick. But as far as town employees are concerned, we're thinking that in town facilities, town buildings, and places where the employees are working, that anybody coming in and out of those facilities should still be masking at this point. And if we open the buildings back up, so.
Yeah, I believe somewhere our epidemiologist is suggesting that he's targeting like the end of June or something like that.
Right. I think that was something somebody, he did a, I think WMUR, they did a sort of a public session where he spoke to somebody or group anyway, and said that same thing was that maybe by the end of June. And that was Rick Alpers was, when I spoke to him and you got my memo there on that. It was basically they're saying hang in a little bit longer because OSHA hasn't done their interpretation of the CDC guidelines yet. So, and even though as a, as a town, our employees are not subject to OSHA technically because of our status as a municipality, but they're still sort of the overall standard for health and safety guidance for employees. So as far as town facilities are concerned, keeping people masking at least for the next few weeks until we see that rate of vaccination go up higher is what they're recommending. So.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And Marlon, I know you're in on your vacation. So I don't mean to have you sit there, but.
Yeah, no, 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 it's fine. So we are, we have 90, no, I'm sorry, 81 students, I believe, on campus, living on campus right now. That number will fluctuate between now and the end of July, up to as high as 100 probably. And then, so they are all being required to be tested. And then we're testing, continue weekly testing for all employees who are working on campus. So we're doing anywhere between 340 and 306, 60, 70 tests a week. This is our third, tomorrow will be our third week of that. We've had no cases at all since we began testing post commencement. So Scott, any of those cases, luckily, they're not coming from Plymouth State anymore, which is a nice change of pace, right? But that's what happens when you go from 3,000 tests a week to 350. We are keeping our, so, so last Monday, the day after commencement, we lifted, or two weeks ago, we lifted our outdoor mask mandate on campus. We are still requiring masks in buildings, and we're going to revisit that on June 30th, with any kind of new guidance on indoor masking to happen right after July the 4th. So we're requiring it right now in all of our classrooms, continuing to, and in any offices where people are interacting with each other. Obviously, if there's a, myself and my assistants, for instance, we're both vaccinated. We don't wear masks in our own office, but then we put them on if other people come in. But we have begun lifting our indoor space restrictions. And beginning in July, July 12th, we will start having new students come in for orientation, for day-long orientation. Masks will be required most likely for them because they're coming from various places. But our outdoor mask mandate is gone. We anticipate we will relook at the indoor mask mandate as we get towards the end of June. We have not made decisions yet on what fall is going to look like. Much of that will depend on vaccinations. The other thing I can tell you is starting June 1st, any employee who has been back, is fully vaccinated, can submit their vaccination form to us, and they can opt out of weekly testing at that point. So, and from a student standpoint, we're really taking the, trying to present as many carrots to our students since we can't right now mandate the vaccine, but you know, they won't have to quarantine if they leave New England. They won't have to test every week. They'll have much more freedom in, to do more activities and those kinds of things. Right now, we have 87% of our students have told us either they're fully vaccinated or they're planning to be fully vaccinated by the time they come back at the end of August. And we're pretty pleased with that number right now.
Michelle is, Michelle McKeon's on here too.
Okay. Michelle? Oh, there you are. Hi. Do you want to weigh in?
Sure. We don't have the same decisions to make. We're pretty much required as a hospital to continue with masking. So that will continue for our employees as well as for any patients coming in or visitors coming in. We are starting, we will have to report to the federal government vaccine status of all our employees. We've been doing that for flu vaccine for years. We've been told we'll have to do that in the fall for COVID. So we are collecting that information. Each one of us that gets it has a sticker that'll be on our name badge. And so we'll be doing something, somebody at Marlon said, when we have a conference room and meeting and everybody's vaccinated, we will relax our restrictions and masks can come off. And they might even eat during their meeting, which they can't do right now. So, like I said, there's not much we can make a decision yet on because CDC and Department of Health have indicated for hospitals and nursing homes, we need to continue masking. We are debating, we're still testing everybody that is coming in for surgery or is being admitted, for example, through our emergency room. We are contemplating on not testing those that are coming in for elective surgery if they can prove vaccination. But that probably won't happen for another month or so.
Okay. Actually, I have a procedure coming up at Spear. Now it's supposed to be tested prior to it. So maybe I'll beat the date. So any questions from the board to our experts? Or Neil?
How long are the shots good for?
That's really not known yet because it's relatively still new. But they're, they think definitely for six months, if not even longer. Although two of the companies are already working on boosters, thinking by maybe next fall, a booster may be required to further prolong the immunity.
We were, I can just tell you that our commencement speaker indicated to,
He knows more about it than I do.
Indicated to us that they believe it's at least nine months because some of the very first people in some of the trials received the vaccine as early as November, and they still have antibodies. But they do believe, and I think I know Ben Chan and Beth Daly told us this last week, they believe that sometime in the winter, there'll be a booster probably for all three vaccines, as Michelle said. And that'll probably happen every year.
Wasn't it true too, that having the disease doesn't give you enough acquired immunity than getting the vaccine?
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that.
They do have cases where people are getting it a second time. They're not sure if it's because it's a different strain than the original, but they are showing that the antibody levels are declining after a few months. So they are highly recommending you get the vaccine even if you've had COVID.
Right.
I have another question. Does anybody have any data relating to the effectiveness of masks on the flu virus or other respiratory disorders?
I'm sure I could probably get you some because our rules are that if you do not get the flu vaccine, you must wear a mask. So again, if you don't have your sticker for flu and you're seen within six feet of visitors, patients, whatever, you must be wearing a mask. And I'm sure that's founded in science. And I could probably get one of my physicians to dig that up for you if you'd like.
And thinking of my wife works at the Public Health Labs and regarding the numbers of, you know, flus that they've had, it like dropped, you know, almost nothing. So, and one could assume that it probably has a lot to do with, while you're isolating yourself, but also mask wearing. So, anyway. Any other questions? Well, do you, does anyone want to kick off a discussion on how we'd like to proceed? Actually, Steve, you, knowing that, you know, there's going to be an enforcement issue, more so now with people coming from out of state and desiring not to wear masks or not wearing masks and.
Hold on, I just had some technical difficulties. I did not hear your question at all.
Okay, your mic is a little bit squirrely too, but I'm just wondering, you have any, I guess, perception on how we should proceed with regard to like the mask ordinance specifically? Because you're probably dealing more with enforcement issues with out-of-state, you know, people coming to assume that they don't have to wear a mask and, and you know, what's your opinion?
Well, absolutely we're not. It's slowed down. What happened, I can tell you what happened. Actually, why can't I go shopping over again with Market Basket? And I can tell you only about 50% of the people from the store were actually wearing masks. The others were not. Nobody's calling about it anymore. The stores aren't calling about it anymore. They're not asking for our health support. Everybody just left the door. We're not, we're not even getting phone calls about it anymore at all. Maybe you noticed like the login and saying there are no more face mask ordinance. So I can claim that if I'm ready to go.
I caught most of that. But, and I also know that Market Basket's an unfair example because people tend to more ignore, you know, the prohibitions on mask wearing and going in the arrow direction, that kind of stuff. But versus Hanford, we have a, you know, a couple of like test sites right in town. Any other?
And if you look, if you actually go look, there are no more arrows before. I don't know about Hanford, but if you look at Walmart and or Market Basket, they don't have arrows before. They don't have one on the aisle.
Hanford had them off for a while, and then they put them back on. I guess it's still on there, but, well.
The struggle for me, both personally and as a business owner, is I've always been following the guidelines of the CDC. So it, you know, with the CDC saying we don't have to wear masks now, in a bit of a quandary.
And the town statement as well is that we're following the guidelines and what's changed now. That's kind of my opinion on it. But then again, I'm biased. I think everybody knows I didn't want the ordinance to begin with. So, you know, take it with a grain of salt, something for me, but, you know, what are you going to say now? Somebody said, look, I'm here not following the CDC guideline. But that question will come up. We all know it will.
We've already kind of indicated that regardless of where the board might go, the town's still going to have a mask prohibition. I mean, you're going to be wearing a mask when you come into town hall. And I would imagine that the other town offices as well. As far as like opening the office, that's still kind of up in the air. I think probably toward the end of June.
Right now, we're June 15th. Providing again, right now, we're June 15th.
Right.
So.
Have a question?
Yep.
Following on, welcome.
If the mask ordinance is taken off, what threshold would we require to reinstitute it?
Maybe our emergency management director might weigh in. Or you may not want, you may want to avoid that, but.
Well, you have to have a threshold.
No, I think that's yet to be determined, Neil, from Department of Health and Human Services. I think that discussion will take place. And I think that question's going to be asked in our vaccination call this Wednesday, is if mask ordinances are being lifted, what is the threshold to reinstate an ordinance to protect the residents of the town and folks coming in? So I will assure you that I will ask that question on Wednesday on DHHS and try to get some guidance from DHHS and the Attorney General's Office, which sits in on that fall. So I don't have an answer for you today, but we will try to sort one out.
And I can just add that that's one of the things, Neil, we're looking at as well. What will, you know, before we lift everything, we do want to trigger points. That would mean when we start to, we might put things back into our color code of orange and red and that kind of thing. So I think it is an important question, but I think it's still to be determined.
What was our threshold point? Because I don't recall for invoking the mask ordinance. Did we actually have a threshold?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Well, and I'll just add one other thing. I mean, if you, if I remember our conversations right in the fall, part of the reason, rightfully so, that I think you all were anxious to do it, there were lots of reasons, but one was that we had 4,000 students coming in that were going to be downtown, right? And we wanted them to be masked up. You wanted them to be masked up. I think the community wanted them to be masked up. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but Mary Ann, I think that was one of the reasons, right? That's one of the reasons together we decided that it made sense. Those students are gone now, but they are going to be back, we hope.
And you've got a really high rate of vaccinations, or that you will have for the students and stuff.
I'd like to make a motion that we end the mask ordinance in town effective immediately.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So I do have a question for Michelle. It's been come up in conversation. At this point, so I'm vaccinated, most of my family, friends are all vaccinated. The risk now is for the folks who aren't vaccinated? Is that a fair statement?
Yes. Primarily, it'll be those that are not vaccinated, our children, those that have chosen not to. But there are also studies that are showing that there are certain individuals that are not getting the same level of immunity as healthy individuals. So those might be organ transplant individuals, certain medications that they're on, that they're not getting the same level of protection.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, just let me make statements. Zach moved and Ted seconded. All right. Okay. Go ahead, Ted.
I'd also like to add that being the only town in the region, it makes it very confusing for people coming here. No one else has this mandate. And since the state mandate has been lifted for a while, people just assume that they don't have to.
Aggressively assume apparently too, on occasion. So. Thanks Ted. Any other comments?
It's the chair not a comment. Can you guys hear me better now? Did that?
Yeah, yeah, very much so. Yeah.
All right. Good. Thank you.
So now you got a mic working. You want to make a comment or?
I know. I do agree with Ted. There is a lot of confusion, you know. You know, and I've had, you know, business owners come up to me too, and restaurant owners, same thing, and ask, you know, what my thoughts are, what's going to actually happen tonight? And I said, you know, I honestly don't know. You know, so I said, it's entirely up to the board and we'll have to wait and see what happens after tonight.
Read that at the regular meeting, if everybody.
You're kind of like.
If we are to have a resurgence, would we be able to reinstitute some measures to protect the public?
Well, Kathy actually came up with a couple of paragraphs to read if we do end up accepting, removing the ordinance. But it's the Select Board reserves the right to reenact the face mask ordinance should the pandemic take an adverse turn. So I guess that's kind of discretionary without a number.
I'm not an attorney, but we are still in a state of emergency. So I don't see why you could not do that if you wanted to reinstate it again. You know, and the fact of the matter is, we're going to remain in a state of emergency probably throughout the year because we're getting federal funding because of it.
Yeah, I would assume so too. Yeah, he's not going to remove that emergency order.
No, absolutely not.
Any other comments, concerns?
So do you want to amend this motion with that language?
Oh, yeah. Good, good.
Ted would do them or?
Do you want to read it first?
I don't know as I, I don't know as I would. I mean, based on what the chief just said, and I intend to agree, we have the authority to protect the public during a state of emergency if we think it's right. It's what allowed us to pass the ordinance to begin with. By rescinding it now, I don't see that that defeats any of our authority to put one in place again in the future.
So I'm just going to, how about just saying when necessary? Select Board reserves the right to reenact the face mask ordinance when necessary.
To me, that feels like we're intentionally putting our finger in someone's eye, and I don't know why we would do that.
I don't have a problem with the verbiage at the end. I mean, we're repeating what we already know, but, you know, the rest of the folks, the rest of the town may not know that, or at least be aware of that.
If we're going to add it, let's not say when necessary, let's say if.
Yeah, that's kind of more positive.
It's Zach's motion. So Zach has to either move it or?
Zach, you okay with that language?
I, I feel like that language is unnecessary.
So you're not, we're not going to amend it? Well, let me read the first part of this. So the comments that Kathy described was, the Select Board has voted to lift the town's mask ordinance. The Select Board support, the Select Board supports businesses that continue to require masks in their establishments and encourage all to continue to observe the safety guidelines designed to slow the spread of the coronavirus, including social distancing, proper hand washing and mask wearing for those not yet vaccinated. We ask that you please consider getting your vaccine today. And then the Select Board reserves the right to reenact the face mask ordinance if necessary. And the Select Board appreciates the consideration and cooperation of the towns, of the townspeople during this very difficult time.
I think that that's a perfectly fine statement, but I wouldn't say reserves the right. I would just say has the right.
Okay. Are you, are you okay with that?
Well, that, that was, the motion was about removing the mask ordinance. I mean, I think if that's the statement we're going to say to the public in the next meeting, that seems fine. But I'm not sure the two things are related.
Okay. I'll buy that. Ted, you agree with that as well? Or not? I meant it was just staying with the emotion. Okay?
Stay with the motion. Have that be the statement.
Do we need to vote on the statement also?
I don't think so.
Unless you're opposed.
No.
I think it's great. I think it'll put some people at ease. Some people that are nervous about it going away or whatever, it'll put their minds at ease that if we do have an uptick in cases, that we could bring it back.
Right. Right. Okay, um, in that case, um, Mary Ann, your vote.
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Back.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can we briefly discuss uh timing of opening town hall?
Uh, we can do that and also returning to normal meetings perhaps, which might not be. Uh, a joint um discussion, but you know, they could be separate, we could actually have meetings now. We can still have like um, you know, a Zoom uh part of the meeting, but you know, we could actually sit here at a table.
Wait, are you guys gonna start providing dinner, because I was eating through these meetings?
And can I wear pajamas, is that frowned on? While eating, of course.
There you go.
So um, as far as opening though, um, I think we're, you know, pretty much um, well, we could discuss it, but. We're targeting what, May or yeah?
June fifteenth.
Two fifteenth or the twenty first or whatever, is it, what was the?
June fifteenth, we're gonna, we were gonna be closed through June fourteenth, which is your, is June fourteenth.
Yeah, June fifteenth, open the doors Tuesday, June fifteenth.
Yep.
Um, would you like to discuss?
Is there any good reason to, to wait that long? I mean, I, I certainly agree with uh, you know, Missy's opinion that we should make sure the public is still masking up when they, when they visit, but. Is there any reason to keep the building closed that long? Scott?
I, I was just gonna say, Zach, I, I think we need a little bit of time to figure out what signage we're going to need at the town hall. Because we should have people coming in one way and exiting a separate way. So that we don't get cross contamination of people coming in and out of the door, whether wear a mask or not wear a mask when they exit. Um, the handicap um entrance, that's a different story. And how many people we're going to allow in that square footage in lobby area? And how we're going to be able to manage that in getting markings on the floor? So I think we need a little bit of time to figure that all out, to make sure that. Um, you know, we're following best practices and getting people and getting people out safely. As well as the social distancing inside the town office, whether it's in the outside lobby by the town clerk. Or in the inner lobby by the town office, how are we going to control that flow of movement in and out um accordingly? That makes sense.
Yeah, considering DHHS is um, uh, being a little more cautious and, you know, about things as well, I think. Be, before they actually formulate um how best we should open up, I think we'll just make sense of, you know, it's remain closed, but.
So you, do you think it makes sense to wait the full three weeks, or are we able to open sooner than that?
Well, you know, um, Dr. Chan is like indicating that he's gonna, you know, have, well, there's gonna be um, I guess, a formulation of. Final practices, not best practices uh towards the end of June. So. I think it's worth waiting for.
So I got, sorry Scott, go ahead. Well, my question is, is for Scott and the board as well, but uh, my question is, we are still taking temperatures at the PD. All of my employees are vaccinated. You know, because we're all vaccinated also, if, if somebody comes into the PD, yeah, we mask up, but in the PD, we don't mask up. Um, but if somebody enters, and enters the PD, we will. However, the whole temperature thing, do we still need to continue to do that at this point?
So I might, yeah, actually I see Marlon with his thumbs down. So I, I went to um, you know, meet with um Donnie's younger sister. Um, when she came to Plymouth, and she said, zero people in the White House had an elevation of temperature that came down with COVID. Zero.
I, I know that we, we gave, we, we do not require any employees to. We, we have been requiring employees to record their temperature every day. All of the research, including what we heard from Deb Burks, but also from Ben Chan, was that. What we thought in August made a lot of sense related to temperature, isn't really a, a sign or signal of COVID at all today.
Perfect, can we, can we change that? Because it is a policy that uh, everybody's doing it, all the town employees are doing it.
That was part of what I was gonna talk about, Steve, when we got, we'll get into that a little bit more, is I think we could do away with the temperature taking, the certification of that. Um, but keeping our COVID illness policy in the event that we do have an employee that contracts COVID. Because we know we have employees that have not been vaccinated and may choose not to get vaccinated. So I think that policy stays in place and the temperature certification goes away.
I like that idea.
Does that require a modification of the procedures or? Or is that just a policy, you know, that we just decide right now? Or Kathy can?
So the questionnaire that we fill out every day also asks several other questions. Um, so is the recommendation from you, Scott, that we don't have to do that form at all as employees?
I don't believe so, Anne.
Okay, so yes, there is a modification to everything that, the policy and whatnot.
What's Missy gonna do then?
I don't know.
Okay.
She'll modify it, she'll be glad she won't have to file them every day. Yes, that's what he's saying. I'm up there, they can't hear you, I'm sorry.
My understanding from Primex and the, this uh Department of Health and Human Services is that you still do the employee screening, maybe not the temperature taking. But that you would still have people do the.
The questionnaire.
Questionnaires attesting that they don't have symptoms, that they're. Um, you know, haven't. Traveled internationally and, and all that kind of stuff, the other questions that are on there, but. Um. I, Primex in particular is not giving us any written guidance at this point, they're just kind of saying they really don't know yet and. And so, I mean.
I, I just know that the state told us as state employees back in January that we did not have to do the health attestations anymore.
I mean, I, I, I can't counter that for sure, you know, I, I just hadn't heard anything come down through our channels so far that said. We don't have to, but as the percentage of people that get vaccinated goes up, you know, obviously the need for that goes down, so. Um, I'm not sure, I mean, I think the temperature taking part of it for sure seems a little superfluous at this point. Um, but. I'm not sure about the travel parts of it yet and some of those other things, so.
Well, um, as long as we can probably eliminate the temperature part, and maybe you can have a conversation with uh, you know, Scott and Kathy and see. How best to proceed with um the other documentation.
I mean. We have had some cases internally, you know, back.
Right.
Back a few months, so I don't know, I mean. Like I said, I think it really kind of depends on the percentage of people that got vaccinated.
Or just change the policy, Missy, that states if you're traveling outside, you must. Do this, this and this before you um travel. And when you come back, these are your requirements, that could all be in the policy and not in the form of a questionnaire.
Yeah, I just, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, I, I don't have an, an issue with it necessarily. I just haven't thought it through, so I don't want to say, yeah, I think this is a great idea because I haven't really looked at that question yet.
And, and I think in the policy, it does talk about being quarantining and not having to quarantine, and if you're vaccinated, et cetera.
Do you think everything from the questionnaire is covered in the policy enough?
I do, but I will review that again thoroughly tomorrow to make sure it is.
So we can follow up at the next meeting, just tell us so we don't have to take.
Or do we need, do we need the board to weigh in? Or can this just be a policy decision based on, you know, your, Missy and Kathy and Anne's conversation? And they can disseminate.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Rather than wait two weeks.
Yeah, or can we just grant Scott the authority to adjust that policy?
Wow, that's, that's a lot of power.
Wow.
How about I make a recommendation to Kathy and Kathy takes care of it.
Sounds good.
Do we need a motion to give them that authority or are we good?
I think we're good.
Yeah.
We're not good?
You're good.
All right, we're good. Well, that's good.
Do we need a motion to allow in-person meetings?
Allowed to what?
In-person meetings.
Like here?
Yeah, for us and for the planning board, et cetera.
Okay, there, there's a, there's a further discussion too on um, well, you know, there's that. And there's also the fact that at some point, maybe probably late in June. Initially, I thought it was gonna be like early in June, that they're gonna cut out um. The ability to have remote meetings, but that's also gonna be tied to the executive order, which may be. An indeterminate amount of time that before that's actually rescinded. So, you know, hopefully we'll be able to, be able to do remote meetings, even if we meet in person. You know, like um, it'd be nice to have a Zoom component. Um, and even for um board members or the public. So. But that's, it's kind of premature to um at least nail that down, but we can, we can talk about um meeting. Just generally as a board. Um, if we so choose to meet as a board together. Maybe the planning board doesn't want to, and they may have a point in.
I mean, the planning, planning board was indicating on the most recent meeting that they would like to be back in person.
Planning board has indicated that they, they'd like to, okay.
They would like to be able to be back in town hall.
All right, well, um. What does everyone think? I mean. You think uh that's something we should offer to our boards and commissions at this point?
I like the idea.
Yes.
All right, so is there, is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the various boards and commissions the ability to meet back in the town hall.
All right, Ted moved, Zach seconded, any discussion?
Will there be a limit on the number of citizens who can attend the meetings?
Yeah, it, it's just gonna be, I, I imagine it's just going to be the board or the commission group. Because citizens would have to have access to get up here, and we're, we've got the office closed until. Middle June, middle, late June, something like that. Okay, so.
That was my assumption in making the motion.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, um, uh Ted, Ted, your vote?
Aye.
Missy, Mary Ann?
She said she'd have to step away.
Oh, okay, Neil, your vote?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye, we got a majority.
A super majority. All right, great. Well, get your butts down here right now, I think. I've been making the trip down here.
Twice.
Yeah, I forgot something, I had to go home and pick it up, so. All right, that's great. Um. Oh, yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll hold off um just um. Remote access until we have actually more of a decision where we're going. Um, oh, Scott Whedon, was enforcement officer regarding Thirty High Street.
Yes, so just to give a little.
Folks, I'm gonna take off unless you need me for anything else.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Marlon, sorry to have.
Thank you all.
Bye, Marlon.
Take care.
I'm all the same if you don't have anything else you need me for.
Good, thanks.
I'm Michelle.
Thank you, take care.
Do you still need me? Do, can I? Just checking, just checking.
If, if Mary Ann goes, I'm going to.
Well, I'm going too then, I'll take my car right home. Uh, anyway, all right, so we've got um. Sixty, okay, okay, we got, the other thing, uh, uh, you know. I'm kind of dabbling right now.
Scott was telling us something.
What's that?
Scott was speaking.
Well, yeah, okay, Scott's also gonna maybe discuss, you know, what's going on at uh sixty-one Pleasant Street too? Does you, because uh email, you know, went out, um, I'm just wondering, is there any update on that?
Yeah.
Regarding the fire?
Um, with regards to the um fire at sixty-one Pleasant, I think Jeremy included a. News release that was in the email he sent out this morning. But there is no update with regards to how the fire started. The occupants um, and Missy did a great job working with the property owner today. The occupants, um, tenants of the building um were housed at the Common Man Inn for a couple nights. The owner of the building has chose to put the occupants up at another. Um, hotel in Plymouth for at least an additional week. I know the Red Cross is currently working um with the family, as well as the school has um been working with regards to the. The young child that was um a tenant in the building as well, so. I think that's kind of it now, Bill, of where we are, but I think it was handled. Um, very well, and all departments worked amazingly well together. Um, and pulled through with limited manpower that, you know, they had that night, so.
Yeah, I have to say, living there, um, it was very impressive, I was totally impressed with the fire department. How they handled everything, the town, how they protected the other houses, it, it was scary, but it was well done, I thought.
I, I concur, you know, and I give a lot of credit to Sergeant Diamond for his work. Um, at the scene, you know, Jeremy, um, when you're, when you're in charge of a fire and you pull up. And your duty crew is waiting um for water to put on the fire. And Jeremy jumped on the engine, he ran the engine, you know, the police department dragged the four inch line up to the hydrant. I mean, it just was a very well-oiled machine. And like I said, Rod Diamond did a fantastic job. Jeremy did a great job in controlling and commanding the scene, but it, it worked very well with all parties that were involved. That was my observation, and I did communicate that to Chief Lefebvre this morning and Jeremy um as well.
That's great. Thanks, Scott, um, now, uh, regarding Thirty High Street.
Thirty High Street, so just a little background on that, we all know that the fire took place March eighth of twenty twenty. And in October, which was the six month date with regards to the building being um. Being raised or removed based on the zoning ordinance says nothing had been done. So at that time, it's um prior to myself coming on, on Brian and Jules. Worked with the owner on, and, and basically back and forth on the telephone, and a couple letters were sent out. With regards to the zoning ordinance and what corrective action had to be taken and, and not really setting a timeframe, so. We have been discussing this um since probably the end of March, first part of April. And we did send out a notice of violation, which um was returned to us. And then we decided, I think the best course of action was to have it hand delivered by the Belnet County Sheriff's Office. As Mr. Page and his wife live in the town of Gilmoreton. So that notice was served, the notice of violation which I signed was served on um April twenty ninth. When that notice was served, it really outlined the provisions of what the zoning ordinance is. It also outlined what corrective action had to be taken by May fourteenth. That was the date that was set with regards to having a response back to the town. With regards to the raise and removal of the debris and filling the foundation. So in that letter, some of the things that Mr. Page had to comply with at this, at that time. Was to submit a building permit application with the theme for demolition. He also had to um make sure that the building was raised and demoed, and the foundation was filled and flattened. And had to submit to us a signed contract by a demolition company. Um, and allowing him until July sixteenth to have the work completed. So new developments that had set since May, uh, since April twenty ninth when it was served. We did not hear from Mr. Page on May fourteenth. And subsequently, last Friday, May twenty first, Mr. Page's wife uh came to the town hall. And submitted a building permit application for the twenty-five dollar fee. What wasn't included in that is number one, they didn't meet the timeline of May fourteenth in responding to us. The second piece, there was no signed contract. The second piece, there was no signed contract with a demolition company to have the building raised or removed and the foundation filled, which was also part of the notice of violation. And the third part was he listed a demolition company, but through all the cer- searches that June and I have done, we cannot find a company, a demolition company by the name that he has listed on his building permit application. Subsequently to that, last Wednesday or Thursday, Kathy and June had a conversation with Attorney Radigan and Attorney Warren, um, from Donahue Tucker, uh, law, law firm. And they felt that, you know, the notification, notice of violation did get Mr. Page's attention. But he did the bare minimum in order to comply with the notice of violation that was submitted. So conversations with Attorney Warren, um, last Friday and again today. He feels the best course of action is to work this case in pursuant to RSA one fifty-five B, which talks about getting rid of hazardous buildings. And it's a more direct action. Number one, it allows the town to issue the order and attachment of the property. Uh, through taxing process, which the town has control over. It's a much better outcome in order to recover the cost because even though the building permit application has been submitted, we don't have a contract from a demolition company. And is the town truly going to have to go in and demo that building and fill the foundation? If we're able to attach a tax lien to the property, at least we have a recourse of collecting the monies that we would have to spend on doing that, which estimation is anywhere between ten and fifteen thousand dollars to go in and do that work. Um, and the RSA is only available if the building is in disrepair. And this process covers that hazardous dilapidated building, um, statute as covered. So, you know, that's, that's what the attorneys, um, Attorney Radigan, Attorney Warren recommend. And a much cleaner process than trying to take this through the court system is actually attaching and putting a lien on both properties, the property in Plymouth and the property in Gilmington that he owns. So we have some securities and recovering our costs in the event that we have to go in and take the building down and fill the foundation. So that's where we are today. And I believe there's a, a notice or a letter in the signature file that you have, um, where the board of selectmen have to sign this. And again, we would have the Belnet County Sheriff's Office serve this to, uh, Mr. Page, um, to, just to let him know, we're, we're not fooling around. We have gotten several complaints. The building is a health hazard. The business, building is a hazard to the neighboring, um, homes in that area. And we are going to follow this through until action is taken.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions on, on that?
No.
Scott, I, I see your, uh, maybe I wasn't aware of it. Your signature, uh, is getting longer and longer when you close. Scott Whedon, EMD Code Enforcement. Bill the Inspector.
Oh.
Pretty soon I'll see you take my job. That's, that's.
You will not see that. I've been there. I've done that nationally.
And all around nice guy.
Yep. Well, thank you very much.
You know, I just, it's been closing. I just think we have done our due diligence as a town of Plymouth and tried to work with this individual to get this done without taking any action. And now it's been over a year. We're working on fifteen months that this building has been sitting there and been a nuisance to that neighborhood. And I think we've done our due diligence and notifications, communications, and now action has to be taken.
Scott, if, if we assume that the pattern we've seen continues and, and no action is taken, what happens in ten days?
In ten days, they'll attach the property, put tax liens on both the properties. And we will subsequently go in and demo the building and fill the foundation.
And so we'll contract as a town, we'll contract with a, um, with someone to do that, that work?
Right. I talked about, talked a little bit about that with Kathy and obviously if it's over ten thousand dollars, we'll have to go out to bid. We'll have a contract with a demolition company. Um, you know, and, and even if it costs us a little bit more to get it done sooner than later, I think we really owe that to that neighborhood and getting that building taken care of.
Are, are you aware that there may be some asbestos issues in that building as well?
I am not Zach. I am not.
Okay.
But I know that in talking to, um, Spears Brothers in Meredith, is that they would do a full assessment before any work was done on the building.
That's great.
That's just one company that I knew did that type of work and reached out to check and see how that would be, how the building would be evaluated before it was demoed.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it, the, the building's a scar on a, on a very nice neighborhood in our town. So, uh, the, the sooner we can get this dealt with, the better from my perspective.
Very good. Any other comments? Thanks very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
Um, last on the list.
You need a motion to sign this order?
Oh, like, yeah. Thank you. So, um, now this is revised order, is it?
Scott, there's no date on the first order, um, that they're actually signing today. But I don't think it's changed since Friday.
It has not. It has not.
It says, uh.
There's no date on the top.
The date will go on the, on the signature page on the back. I don't.
So they just need a motion from the board to sign that order.
Okay.
I move that we sign the order as presented.
All right.
A second.
Zach moves Ted, um, seconds. Any discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, Mary Ann, your vote?
Aye.
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 Ted said aye and Neil?
Aye.
Bill, aye.
So to expedite this, we really need the board to come in and sign this tomorrow morning. If it is in the file, please stop in as soon as you can. Tomorrow morning would be appreciated.
Okay. Do you want me to put the date down?
Yeah, today's date.
Okay. Twenty-fourth day. Um, briefly, like in two minutes, I guess, um, done this before, but, um, at some point, probably the next meeting, we'll have us more time to, um, talk about the National Guard Armory and what the status of that is and the fact that, um, as it stands now, the, the recognition by, um, the state that the armory will return to, uh, the ownership of Plymouth. That recognition was on a document that we've had for several years now. That has been changed by the Adjutant General. And, um, it goes back to the state, which would, would cause a problem to have this very valuable piece of property kind of go up for grabs. So, um, one of the things to pursue that might be, you know, kind of like a good time at this point, even though it might be like five or seven years or whatever, for them to actually, you know, move. Um, it'd be good to kind of establish an ownership, um, succession. And it would also be good to probably entertain, um, our senator and our representatives to co-sponsor, um, a bill that would transfer the property to Plymouth once they vacate the premises. So that's what I kind of wanted to bring to the board. Um, just to see if that's a good idea. And whether we should, um, actually, unfortunately it's six o'clock right now. We need to go away or if we can, um, we can nail it down at our next meeting. I guess there's real, no real hurry. Is that okay?
We'll put it on the next meeting.
All right. Maybe we can put it at number one.